Good morning and welcome. Call to order the April 15th meeting of the Pontegorroda City Council. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity in government. Share this meeting for a time of refreshment of spirit and fellowship. Help us to work and think and pray together that we may be more perfectly fitted to serve you and those with whom we work in the task in which we have been called. Help us, God, to look wise and to reflect thy wisdom. Fill us with the high ideals. Inspire us with love and goodwill to all, that we may rightly lead in the paths of shory and honor. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Please let the record reflect that all council members and city officials are present. We have several proclamations this morning, and the first one will be read by Council Member Nancy Pravky.
I'm particularly honored to read this this morning. I am honored also to be a member of the, a board member of the Pontegorroda History Center, the new organization that is the recipient of the Vernon Edna Jane Peoples' collection. And so with that, I'll read this proclamation. City of Pontegorroda, Florida. Whereas Vernon Peoples and the late Edna Jane Peoples have made countless and significant contributions to the city of Pontegorroda, Florida over many years and will be the Pontegorroda History Center's first honorees on April 17th, 2015. And whereas Vernon Peoples, supported by Edna Jane, served as our district Florida House Representative for 14 years, during which time he initiated numerous pieces of legislation supporting growth and improvements for Pontegorroda. And whereas he was instrumental in the founding of Florida Southwestern State College and extending the community college system throughout the state of Florida. And whereas he has served as a historian for Pontegorroda and Florida documenting the rich story of our town through his research, articles, and books, as well as providing countless writers, researchers, and reporters with accurate information about Pontegorroda's place in Florida and United States history. And whereas Vernon Peoples related meticulously factual yet entertaining accountings of the past of Pontegorroda and Charlotte Harbor as a radio educator for over 13 years with Vernon's views on WGCU. And whereas Edna Jane Peoples served the Pontegorroda community through her countless volunteer activities, including founding the first Girl Scout troop in Charlotte County and creating the first in-service training program for nurses at the hospital. And whereas Vernon and Edna Jane Peoples have demonstrated continued public generosity as shown by the donation of their historical collection to the Pontegorroda History Center, which is the cornerstone of its existence. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Pontegorroda, Florida does hereby proclaim Friday, April 17th, 2015 as Vernon and Edna Jane Peoples' Day throughout the community to recognize their outstanding lifelong achievements and lasting contributions to the citizens of Pontegorroda and Charlotte County, Florida. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 15th day of April, 2015, City of Pontegorroda, Florida, Carolyn M. Freeland Mayor. And accepting are Vernon's daughters, Carolyn and Jane. I know you, I think Carolyn is it? You have two, your two sons are here? Jane is, okay. And I know Gussie's here, so if you're gonna, I'll come up then. Gussie, would you like to say something? You're never short in her words, Gussie.[343.03][343.03](laughter) This is Gussie Baker, and Gussie is Vernon's sister.
I want to thank you for this proclamation. It's really, really an honor for the city to do this, and I know Vernon and Edna Jane would be very pleased with everything that's happening this weekend. The fact that we're having a big event to honor them on Friday night means an awful lot to this family, and they would be very proud to know that the city of Pontegorroda is having their collection, and that it will be saved for future generations to enjoy, just as a lot of people in Pontegorroda and Charlotte County have enjoyed it. So we really thank you a lot.
I'm just sorry that Vernon and Edna Jane were not here to, to also receive this. I was very fortunate to know and work with Vernon Peoples. He's a very quiet, humble man who recognized how a community foundation in Charlotte County can make a difference in our community. He deserves recognition for his significant impact in Florida, our state's education system, and in maintaining a historical record for those of us who now live in Pontegorroda and Charlotte County. I believe his major contribution, however, has been his vision and leadership in helping to establish the Charlotte Community Foundation, an organization that will impact our community now and forever. As noted in yesterday's Charlotte Sun editorial, there was never any doubt how much Vernon Peoples cared about this community. His legacy of leadership, volunteerism, and charity will be synonymous with his name. His life was one for the history books. Indeed. He and his wife, Edna Jane, have blessed our community with their presence. They won't be missed. And now, I'd like to read another proclamation. Proclamation, City of Pontegorroda, Florida. Whereas Pontegorroda is ranked as one of the safest cities in Florida, and whereas in 1963, Charlotte High School was voluntarily and peacefully integrated, the first in Florida to do so, and this was done before the passage of the Civil Rights Act and without any court order. Whereas 50 years ago in Selma, Alabama, a peaceful march across a bridge for voting rights was met with violence, but many American citizens came back to march peacefully and this time succeeded without meeting further violence. And whereas disturbing events have troubled many parts of our country in recent months, but not in Pontegorroda, where citizens, authorities, and police have voluntarily come together to strengthen lines of communication and cooperation. And whereas a symbolic People's March across the Peace River Bridge from Port Charlotte to Pontegorroda will be held to further the cause of peace, justice, and community unity, and to celebrate Pontegorroda's distinctive role in building peaceful progress for all. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Pontegorroda, Florida, does hereby proclaim Saturday, April 25th, 2015, as March for Peace, Justice, and Community Unity Day. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 15th day of April, 2015, City of Pontegorroda, Florida, Carolyn Freeland Mayor. And accepting is going to be Pastor Lewis Anderson. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Good morning to Mayor Freeman and her cabinet and to the citizens of this great city, Pontegorroda, and Charlotte County. On behalf of the NAACP, I would just like to say thank you. And I'm going to let Ted take the other two minutes to say what I was going to say.[594.16][594.16](laughter) But I really appreciate it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Hey, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The events in Ferguson last year and in other parts of our country shook our nation and left a considerable impact. And in response to that, President Anderson and the Chief of Police, Arnell, communicated with each other and came to the conclusion that we have to make sure that things like that do not happen here, that we need to come together and address issues. Out of that effort, a task force was created, and I would suggest that when you have busy professionals who are knowledgeable and hold responsible positions come together, that means there's a perceived need. And if they keep coming back to the meetings, they see hope, that something can come from all of this. And so what we're proposing with this symbolic march to bring the community together, not that the task force will accomplish great things all by themselves, but that all of our citizens, individuals, groups, organizations, should come together similarly to look at the issues that confront us, to work together to resolve those issues, and to build the Pontegorroda we hope to see. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[680.12][680.12](applause) Our next proclamation will be read by former mayor and council member Rachel Kiesling.
It is my pleasure. Great themes this morning: history, unity, and now safety. Very important. Proclamation, City of Pontegorroda. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens who telephone the Pontegorroda Police Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for monitoring police officers and firefighters' activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas Pontegorroda's public safety telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas in fiscal year 2014, public safety telecommunicators of the Pontegorroda Police Department answered 30,103 administrative phone calls, 6,963 911 emergency phone calls, contributing to a police officer response time of 4 minutes and 50 seconds for all calls and service. And whereas each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job during this past year. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Pontegorroda, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of April 12 through 18, 2015, as National Telecommunicators Week in Pontegorroda, and does hereby honor all of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 15th day of April, 2015, Carolyn Freeland Mayor. And accepting would be our chief, and I'm sure he's got others.[823.12][823.12](applause)
Good morning, Pontegorroda. Butch Arnell, Police Chief, with my, with my brother here, Ray Briggs, Fire Chief. As I've said before, accepting this is Audrey Dennis, our Communications Supervisor, the hardest job in law enforcement. In my seven years as a Chief of Police here, we have had two incidents that have occurred that got attention. They're never good ones, because these people are expected to be perfect. And to expound upon what Council Member Kiesling said, you look at a five-year swatch of numbers, total calls for service in the last five years, 68,000. Total number of ring events on an admin line, now they are working a radio with five screens in that dark room 24/7, 145,058 rings answered by eight people. A number, a total number of ring events on 911, 38,968, with an average line-ring duration of three seconds, and for 911, two seconds. They're measured in every way you can imagine, and it is the hardest job. This week at the Police Department is a special week. Every day, and if you went in dispatch right now, you'd see quite a festive environment, but every day, a different squad, a different portion of the department is bringing in every, yesterday, it was chicken and waffles (laughter) by Bravo Squad, and it was an eclectic mix. I promise you. So there's some ill people at the department (laughter). But this is our, this is our week as a department to tell our telecommunicators how much we appreciate them and for you to get to see the face that you never get to see, and we
I just want to thank you for the proclamation. I hope you all get to stop in dispatch, because we are having a good time this week.[948.81][948.81](laughter)
Thank you again.
Thank you.[951.81][951.81](applause)
Our last proclamation will be read by Council Member Tom Kavanaugh.
My pleasure. Thank you. Proclamation, City of Pontegorroda, Florida. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees wherever planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city has celebrated Arbor Day and has been recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City for 21 years, has received the Tree City USA Growth Award for 11 years, and was awarded the prestigious Sterling Award by the National Arbor Day Foundation in February 2013. And whereas the city desires to continue to support efforts to care for our community, forest, and educate our citizens on its importance, now therefore, the City of, the City Council and the City of Pontegorroda do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2015, as Arbor Day, and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees, trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Passed and duly adopted this 15th day of April, 2015, City of Pontegorroda, Florida, Carolyn Freeland Mayor. And accepting our own queen of Arbor Day, Joan LeBeau.[1078.01][1078.01](applause)
Thank you for that proclamation. On behalf of the city, I accept it, and this is our 21st year celebrating Arbor Day in the city. This year's theme is Trees Are Terrific in Cities and Towns, and everyone is invited to attend the Arbor Day Celebration, April 24th, Friday, at Lashley Park. This year, we will have over 388 students attending, which is our largest single-event day ever. We, they will be winding through the Knowledge Trail, learning how trees affect our city. This event could not be made possible without our partners, the Florida Forest Service and Mosaic. The Forest Service provides a 50/50 match with the city, and Mosaic contributes over, Mosaic contributes $5,000 toward this award-winning event. We are continuing to partner with the Downtown Merchants Association. This year, we will have the Second Annual People's Choice Award, and as we did last year, we will display the posters that the students of the 5th Grade Tree Academy create, and the poster is on the wall. Each of the individual posters will be displayed at a gallery walk this Thursday night, so if you get a chance, please stop by, vote for your choice, and what we'll do is we'll have the award presented to the students at the May 20th City Council meeting. And we look forward to celebrating Arbor Day. We ask you to support it, and we ask you to participate in our gallery walk this Thursday night. Thank you.
Thank you, John.[1183.51][1183.51](applause) At this time, if there is anyone who has been nominated for a committee of, on the city activities, you may come forward and introduce yourself. If the rest of you wish to leave, you may, but you will be missing an exciting meeting.[1202.83][1202.83](laughter) Again, is there anyone wishing to introduce themselves? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our public hearings, and our first one is a second reading, CP 0115.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance, which are read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Pontegorroda, Florida, amending the City of Pontegorroda Comprehensive Plan 2025 by adding a new Section 11 to be titled Historic Element and renumbering succeeding sections accordingly, updating the Table of Contents, Introduction, Acronyms, Definitions, Maps, and References, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Are there any questions or comments?
No. For the record, Joan LeBeau, we will go ahead and make those changes that the mayor provided us during the week. There were three small changes to be made, and they will be amended, so when you adopt the, when you make your recommendation for approval, would you please include "as amended by the mayor"?
Thank you.
Is that proper, David?
Well, can you state for the record what those changes were, please?
Yes. In the Table of Contents, and on page 32, there was a change, there was a miss, words were missing in one of the names of the Pontegorroda Mural Society, and then it's referred to as the Pontegorroda Historical Mural Society in another section. They will be corrected to Pontegorroda Mural Society. And then on page 11-29, there will be a, the words "gifted to the city" from the Charlotte Communication, Charlotte Community Foundation will be added, and we will delete the reference to the wrecking ball.
Oh, good.[1315.78][1315.78](laughter) They were indicating that it was, this was related to the Freeman House being donated by the community foundation, and they said that the house was up for being wrecked with a wrecking ball, and that wasn't really the case, but we would never have done that.[1329.71][1329.71](laughter) But, yes, so thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance, CP 0115? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Last call?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I would move approval of CP-01-15 with the changes identified and read into the record.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve CP 0115 with the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have no quasi-judicial public hearings. We do have citizens' comments on the ordinance resolution item only, and this relates to our firefighters' retirement system. This is a second reading. Any comments from council members?
Move approval?
I get it.
Yes.
This is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Pontegorroda, amending the City of Pontegorroda Firefighters' Retirement System, is adopted by ordinance 879-87, and subsequently amended. It's hereby further amended to provide for compliance with the Internal Revenue Code, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Any other comments?
Move approval, GA 0315.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve GA 03-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it has been passed. We now have our consent agenda, and we will accept citizens' comments on just consent agenda items only. This includes our minutes, our invoices for legal services, resolution with regards to a 50/50 matching grant application. Also includes the adoption of our update on the analysis of impediments to fair housing, as well as to reestablish fees for our land development regulations regarding annexation, and then also the purchase and installation mile markers along Pontegorroda pathways. I guess I should first ask, did anyone wish to pull an item? Yes, Tom?
I would like to pull D4, just for an explanation to all of those that are here in the room.
Okay. Anyone, any other ones?
Nope, that was it.
I would like to pull D2 and D3. Shall we have a motion to pass the remainder of the consent?
Citizen comments.
Pardon? I had asked for citizen comments. There weren't any, right? Any citizen comments?
Move approval of the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
With regards to D2, this relates to the analysis of the impediments to fair housing choice, and I wanted to bring it to, again, our citizens' attention. There are no HUD or Housing Urban Development sanctions. There are no HUD sanctions against Pontegorroda. There are no fair housing lawsuits against Pontegorroda. There have been no fair housing complaints received over the past five years, and there's no records that exist for any complaints prior to that time, so it's all good news. But the HUD recommendations, the assessors, did include several items that the city could undertake to ensure information is more readily available to all, and the report also provided recommendations for other entities or organizations to whom the city could urge some additional action. So most of the recommendations are very easily fixed, and I seek the council's approval for staff to address them over the, this coming year, specifically to acknowledge that our city is committed to ensuring fair housing for all. And if we, I'll go through those rather quickly. But the first one deals with, and again, shows that we do have a formalized policy regarding fair housing inquiries, and the information is complete, however, anyone seeking that information may find it difficult to find on our website. So our website is being redesigned. This would be a good opportunity to include it right up front. The second one, transportation and access to public transit, was found to be an impediment. This is, again, all across the county. I think this is not, nothing new to Pontegorroda. But what we can also do here, I believe, is that we can have a link on our website to the county's website specifically to transportation. Again, they identify Dial-a-Ride and Sunshine Ride, so those are two accesses that we can, we can also do. The third one is that the city should request local newspapers to ensure that the HUD disclaimer regarding fair housing is published on their website and in print. So I think we can communicate that, and again, I'm sure this is an oversight, but again, can easily be done. We've gotten really kudos in that the city has made strides toward the inventory of affordable housing stock, and that we just continue on this path. The last, the fifth one is that they want the Board of Realtors, while they do publish the HUD fair housing information on their website, they do not hold classes for their members, and I think that's something maybe, again, the Realtors could take up, but we could, again, just mention that, and I will bring that up at our next business chamber meeting that we have. And then the last one is to expand the distribution of fair housing materials throughout the community, and again, HUD provides posters, they provide all kinds of information, pamphlets, et cetera, so I'm sure that these materials would be available. We can collect them and make sure that they are posted around the community. So those were things that I thought we could do easily, and if it's agreeable with council that we would move forward.
Certainly.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion? I mean, we need to approve this item.
Approve that particular agenda item, yes.
Approve the resolution for the 2015 update to the analysis of impediments to fair housing.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next one is just regarding D4, annexation resolution.
No, D3?
You pulled D3 as well.
Oh, D3. I'm sorry, Tom. Please.
Annexation.
D3 is annexation, yes. I'm sorry, I had D4 listed on my, my paper.
I pulled, are we up to D4?
I would just wanted just to make a comment on the resolution for D3. In the first, and I have to pull it up here, I apologize, taking a little extra time here. In the first paragraph, it says, "Whereas it is the intent of the City Council that the City of Pontegorroda shall not be required to bear any part of the costs for processing applications and petitions related to annexation." And we do have some costs. We have staffing costs, and so I just felt that, to be real clear, that maybe we can change it to, it is an intent of the City Council of the City of Pontegorroda to reduce the costs for processing applications. And then And then the next paragraph falls right in with that in terms of how we might do that. Would that be acceptable?
That's acceptable.
Can we have a motion?
Does that work, Howard?
Yeah, I mean, the
Is that all right?
We don't charge for staff time, even though our staff is our staff. We pay them.
Right.
They may work on annexation, they may not. So it's fine.
Yeah, it is kind of confusing because our discussion centered around the external, the hard costs that we, not the staff time. So that is, that would, I think, yes.
May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 3D3. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now, Tom, D4?
Yeah, I would just like an explanation for the benefit of all watching and all here present, the, with regard to the benefit of the mile markers and what their intended use is. Maybe Howard, you could comment on that.
The staff has worked with our public safety folks to come up with a program that, while it may be new for us, it's not new for the country. And that is on our Punta Gorda pathways. We plan to put in mile markers. We're working on the exact language. I mean, you have a sample of what it might be, placing them a half a mile apart so that if something happens on a pathway, it will help the dispatchers or the firefighter responses or the police responses or really anybody to be better locate where you are. Some of us may know where we are, many people don't. And the more accurate information you can give to 911 is very helpful. So this program can be funded through our sales tax dollars and we think it would be a very big benefit for the pathway system.
Yes, Nancy?
Yeah, when I was speaking with Howard, I suggested that we coordinate this effort with the Team Punta Gorda Bicycle Friendly Community Committee. There are many residents that participate in that who have the bicycle all over the country and around the world and know what the marking systems are like. I've heard them comment about the marking systems in other countries and, and other locales. So I think it would be great to get the input of other people that, I'm not certainly one of them, so, but, so that we can do something that would be
Perhaps consistent with other areas?
Well, consistent and take advantage of the experiences that others have had, whether or not it's every half mile or every tenth of a mile or whatever it might be, that there's a naming, a naming nomenclature that needs to be established for the different trails so that it's easier to identify which trail you're on so that, you know, however these are marked.
Yes, Tom.
Should an emergency pop up in one of our pathways, we know the ambulance and the fire truck are not going to fit in there, how, how would we handle getting medical assistance to somebody within the pathways who makes a call like that?
Our pathways are not very far from the street.
Okay.
We can handle it.
Rachel?
I would just like to commend the staff on the design, that we're not putting more signposts out there, more clutter. I mean, I love this. Anything that's flat but informational, I think, is, is outstanding. So if it's done other places, I'm glad we copied somebody else's idea. And, you know, of course, they'll probably have something decorative, knowing our urban design department. It won't be like ugly like the, the one on the left, but it'll probably be something, you know, attractive. And I think, I think it's, it, probably half miles, I would think, because a mile is quite a, a long distance, you might have a stretch of path that, I think every stretch should have one marker. Because if you're on the linear park and you have the intersections, you may be on a section that doesn't have, you know, that didn't have a marker. So I'm sure they'll, they'll dive right into it and get it going.
Any other comments, Jess Nancy?
Just a comment in regard to our public safety team. They have the bicycles that do have access to the, all the trails. So that's one of the ways in which people can be helped.
Or bicycle medics.
Bicycle medics.
Yes. Very good. All right, so are we okay with the moving forward then, Tom?
I'll move approval of consent agenda item D4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve agenda item D4. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll be moving into our regular agenda, citizens' comments on the regular agenda items only. And this would include our discussion regarding Fisherman's Village land lease and offer to purchase the lease property from the city. It also includes our local vendor preferences study and also drainage issues related to fluorotan sod. Anyone wishing to speak to any of these issues may come forward now.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I'm Kathy Burnham, Marketing and Events Manager, and it's been my honor and privilege to have been part of the Fisherman's Village team for the past 15 years. I have had the pleasure of marketing our unique, diverse property locally, nationally, internationally, and I oversee and implement our marketing objectives and strategy which includes a diverse mix of print, billboards, radio, internet, social media, and cooperative advertising. I travel the state of Florida exhibiting at expos and trade shows to tell our story, not just the story of Fisherman's Village, but inclusive of Charlotte County, the Gulf Islands, and the beautiful, welcoming city of Punta Gorda. We invest in the community in this manner, not because we have to, but because of our passion and love for the village and for this community. I serve on the Tourist Development Council and have witnessed tourism soar to new heights. I have seen hundreds of thousands of people from near and far visit Fisherman's Village to shop, explore, relax, and enjoy our signature special events and our year-round live entertainment. Many of those who have previously visited now call Punta Gorda their home because they just could not resist our area's charm and personality. I am very excited about what the future holds for Fisherman's Village and the City of Punta Gorda. Today, we embark on an opportunity for a brand-new adventure, one with multiple layers and flavors to positively impact our area for years to come. I humbly request that you, our distinguished members of the Punta Gorda City Council, unanimously vote for approval of the land purchase request to be presented to you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
There'll probably be a few more people. Hi, good morning. Ed Wititski. I'm an attorney here in Punta Gorda, longtime resident. And before I, I, I am here to talk about Fisherman's Village. I just want to thank you again for recognizing Vernon and Edna Jane today. It's really with a heavy heart that I'm here today. Vernon meant really a lot to me and a lot to our family. We almost like, feel like part of the family. And, you know, the recognition here this morning was just, you know, so well deserved for someone who did so much to, to the area. And thank you. I, I'm here really just to express my support, not only as, as an attorney for Fisherman's Village, but also as a, as a business owner and as a resident. I, as a point of history, an attorney in our firm years ago in 1976, 1977, represented the original developer of Fisherman's Village, which, which took that property from a broken-down, environmentally challenged boat dock and, and fishing pier property to what it is today. And the current owners of Fisherman's Village have done a great job of enhancing Fisherman's Village as a destination and have really helped, I think, the City of Punta Gorda and all of our businesses by their tremendous marketing efforts, not only in Florida, but really nationwide and worldwide. I think this proposal is the next step in the evolution of Fisherman's Village. This will allow and free the, the developer, which is, the current owner, which is extremely capable group, to make and enhance a greater investment in Fisherman's Village, which I absolutely believe will benefit Fisherman's Village, the City of Punta Gorda, and our surrounding areas. I appreciate your consideration of this request and look forward to working with you as we go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council members. Harley Goldberg, City of Punta Gorda. I'm also here to speak in support of the land purchase by Fisherman's Village. Fisherman's Village is all about Punta Gorda, and Punta Gorda is a lot enhanced with Fisherman's Village. And over the years, I think Fisherman's Village has demonstrated their support of the community from a community standpoint as well as from a business standpoint. The amenities that are proposed to enhance the village will also enhance our city. And I don't think there's any question about that. From an analytics standpoint, for those of you who are analytics, if you look at the proposed sale price of $3.5 million and the $56,000 a year that the city receives in the lease payment, that's equivalent to 62 years of lease payments that the city would be getting upfront to do with as it needed, again, for, for the city. If I were sitting where you were, and I had been for, for a number of years, my attitude and approach, and I think yours is also, is how can we make this happen for our community? I mean, build in the performance causes, build in the, the, the take-back calls if necessary, but work as a constructive body to help make this happen for the village and particularly for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jim Branch. I'm a resident of Punta Gorda and an employee of Fisherman's Village Marina. I've been with the Marina for 17 years and during that time, I've seen substantial improvements in terms of our docks and our over-the-water facilities. But now, we have an opportunity to develop the upland portion of Fisherman's Village. And I believe that that kind of development can only lead to a very positive impact on not only the resort, but the City of Punta Gorda. Just this morning, our newspaper editorialized the fact that the proposed investments that are going, hopefully going to be made for Fisherman's Village will result in a win-win situation for the city as well as the establishment itself. And I couldn't agree more. I'm very excited to see what comes out of all of this and looking forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Nobody's talked about sod or swales yet.
I can't wait to talk about that.
I thought they were all here for that.
Good morning. My name's Ralph Allen. I run a business over at Fisherman's Village. And I've looked at the deal that is being proposed and not being an attorney or a financial advisor, it's hard for me to wrap my head around some of the details. But it looks to me like it's a good deal for the city. I know that it'll be good for the 40 small businesses that make up Fisherman's Village. And I think it makes sense for the guys that want to invest all the money here. I know that this is a pivotal moment for Fisherman's Village. It's a property that's nearly 40 years old and it's either gonna turn one corner and fade away or it's gonna get jump-started and revitalized and kicked into gear. And I think this is a really good way to do that. They're pledging millions of dollars of investments into that property and I think that's an opportunity that we should work very hard to try and take advantage of. Now, my family probably has as much invested in this property as anybody if you think of it in terms of commitment, because we're three generations into this now. My mother and father started our business there like 35 years ago. I've spent most of my adult life there. My daughters have been there literally since they were in diapers, and I can prove that because I got photos of diapers. Although Alyssa back here probably just as soon, I didn't dig those out right now and show them to you guys. But I think that this proposal is an exciting opportunity to shape the way Fisherman's Village goes for the next generation that's gonna follow my daughters. So thank you and I hope that we can make this work.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to any items on the regular agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. My name is Helen Allen Cernock. And in case you can't tell, I'm the old-timer generation at Fisherman's Village, having been the founder of King Fisher Cruise Lines. As you know, Fisherman's Village is the very heart of the City of Punta Gorda. And I think that any forward motion that we do from this day forward is only going to advance the gnolly, the tourism and the spirit of the City of Punta Gorda, of which I've been very proud to be a part. And I thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Lynn Garofoli. I own Pier 1 Yacht Sales and I am a merchant and Fisherman's Village. I moved my business to the village back in 2006, thereabouts, after Charlie. At that time, it was the village, nothing special. It was a location. It was convenient. Since the time of the new ownership, as a business that sees clientele from not only through Florida, but throughout the United States and throughout the world, their commitment to marketing the village and Punta Gorda has been a great asset to my company without fail. We speak to clients by phone or internet all over the world. And it's really nice to hear somebody say, oh yeah, I've heard of Fisherman's Village. I've heard of Punta Gorda. And I'm talking to people in Europe, Asia, Australia, Canada, wherever. That type of knowledge that's out there about the village gives me, as a business owner, credibility. Having my office there at the village gives me credibility. When I first moved there, I never knew the owners, never saw the owners, couldn't recognize them if I bumped into them. The new owners, they're people that are there, they're there constantly, they're, what they've put forth so far to do the improvements, again, makes my business a credible business. I look at what they have laid out and not only is it a win for the city, but as a business owner, it's a major win for me. And I really hope that you approve this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Allen, Marketing Director and now third-generation family member for King Fisher Fleet down at Fisherman's Village. I'm 26 years old and have spent all 26 years of, of my life growing up down at Fisherman's Village. And I'm very excited to see what could be for the next 26 years as I can continue to grow up there. So I urge you to, to pass this proposal.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kim Lovejoy. I'm the Executive Director of the Military Heritage Museum. And I'm really glad that Ralph doesn't have any pictures of me in diapers. The Military Heritage Museum, well, you never know. The museum has been in Fisherman's Village for seven and a half years now. And I would really like to attest to Kathy and Patty's marketing skills because, well, we consider that we're an asset to the village and I know that, I'm sorry, I'm getting this all wrong, that being in the village is certainly an asset to us. But I think we have kind of a partnership agreement with management. But I want to give you, you're gonna see their numbers in their slideshow, but I'd just like to briefly give you some museum numbers. In our first full year there, we had 40,367 visitors. We know that because we click them as they come through the door. Last year, we had 55,000 visitors. And now we know that we're on track this year to have 60,000. So that really is a testament to how well the village is marketing itself. And of course, we do a little of that too. But I, I just, I think that with this new plan, that's, that is just spectacular, that the muse, that the village is going to truly be a year-round destination. And I hope that you'll all support it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teresa Dillo and I own two retail stores in Fisherman's Village. One is Salty Paws, a pet boutique that I started working at when I was a child. Went off to school, came back 10 years ago and purchased it. Then in 2013, I opened another retail store called Little Minnows. Then in two thousand thirteen, I opened another retail store called Little Minnows, a boutique for children and those who love them. Both my stores have grown successfully, I believe, mostly in part because they're in Fisherman's Village. I believe that if Fishville LLC was able to purchase this land, it's a win-win, it would create more jobs here in Punta Gorda, and in the long run, it would go around and turn more money into Punta Gorda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Marilyn Smith Mooney for the record. I think this is the first time I've been in this room and spoken since I was up there, and that was two thousand eight. But that's how much this project means to me. I know Fisherman's Village for the past twenty years, and it was probably one of the reasons that I decided I wanted to live here, and it also inspired me at the time when I was on council to try and make other parts of the community, the retail community, come alive like our great downtown. But one of the things that I think is very unique about Fisherman's Village is it has the capability to do something we badly need, it can bring a lot of people here in the off-season, and that is something that we just can't ignore because we need more of a balance. And when they bring people to Fisherman's Village, believe me, as they go through town, you're going to have people that'll stop and spend time on our downtown as well. So I can't see any negatives to it, as long as, as Harvey said, build in your clauses that you need so that it really happens. Remember that we had an occasion once with the auditorium property where they weren't going to go and replace it, and we had to take back on that deed, so do what you have to do to make sure it happens, and I have to commend Patty Allen for doing the most fantastic job managing Fisherman's Village since she's been here. She came here, what, just before the hurricane? And Patty Allen is the reason that Fisherman's Village was back up and running as quick as it was. Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Julie Mathis, the Executive Director of the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of my Board of Directors, I'm here to ask for your support of the proposal for Fisherman's Village to purchase the property leased from the City of Punta Gorda. This significant investment will have a lasting positive impact on our local economy. If I had a dollar for every time I said seven tenths of a mile down the road over the last twenty years, I would not be here this morning, I would be walking a beach. We know that Fisherman's Village brings people to our community, it's a destination, and many of those guests return and move here because they love the small-town community. The amenities proposed for the village, the Harbor Walk extension, facade improvements, lighting, restrooms, new buildings, a pool and a beach, yachting, parking, and more, will take an already impressive destination and make it shine. Fisherman's Village will be, continue to be a dynamic economic engine for our community, employ our residents, and bring visitors and future residents to Charlotte County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Perry. Number one, I am a resident of Punta Gorda and very proud to say that. Number two, I am a former employee of Fisherman's Village and former event coordinator, and I know how much this city and Punta Gorda and Fisherman's Village needs these improvements. Kathy and Patty do an excellent job, and we need to provide them with more tools for Fisherman's Village to bring these people to our town. I also am a business owner of two shops in Punta Gorda, in Fisherman's Village, Simply Sweet and Beach Bums, and I am proud to be in Fisherman's Village. I can't think of anywhere else other than possibly downtown that I would want to be. I truly support this proposal and support everything that everybody else has said, a second, third, and fourth all that's said. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Good morning, John Wright from the Punta Gorda Chamber. I want to ditto everything that everybody said, the Board and the Executive and the Business Development Group of the Chamber have all met and discussed Kathy's very lengthy email, eighteen megabytes of information that some people got and some people didn't, and some people had to be faxed, but we've all shared it, we all fully unanimously support it. Lord, everything that's been said already, the only thing that we wanted to add was that this might be the stimulus and the kick that Punta Gorda needed to get other developers to come into town to finish off some of the other missing teeth that we have around town. So we applaud Fisherman's Village and their management for everything they've done, and hopefully this will be a success for everybody and every merchant within the village.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on any item on our agenda? Sod and flotsam, anyone?
Sod and flotsam, sod's good. I'm Laura Steiner, I'm the Director of Tourism for Charlotte County, and I will be very brief because everybody has been very eloquent at the podium, but when I was thinking about this, I thought, aside from the fact that Fisherman's Village has been such a tremendous partner for tourism over the years, and certainly since I've been here, they've been tremendous. Charlotte County is developing quickly, and especially with resurgence of the economy, and Punta Gorda is developing quickly. So it's a safe bet that we're going to have retail development within close proximity to Punta Gorda and certainly in Charlotte County. It's also a safe bet that any of that development is not going to go out and sell the City of Punta Gorda and Charlotte County as a destination. It's also a safe bet that they probably won't put on major events every year that bring in thousands of people to our community. It's also a safe bet that they are not as invested in this community and in Charlotte County as is Fisherman's Village. So I just wanted to say that I wanted to lend my support to this and hope that you will vote favorably for the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our discussion of Fisherman's Village, the land lease and Fisherman's Village offer to purchase the leased property. Patty, we have your presentation.
Patty?
I wasn't going to give you a chance to speak, but since you're here.